I now call the order, order the New Carlisle City Council Meeting Wednesday, August 29, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Mrs. Berner?
Mayor Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Lowry?
Here.
Mr. Shammy? Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lindsey?
Here.
If you don't mind standing in the indication by Vice Mayor Bill Lindsey.
Heavenly Father, thank you once again for bringing us together to do the city's business. Lord, we ask you to bless each and every one of us as we do what we need to do for our city this evening, Father. We ask you to bless each and every one of these people that came out. Bless them on their way home this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. You don't mind saying that.
That night, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no minutes tonight, no communications, no city manager's report. We now are to the comments from members of the public. Please feel free to speak, and you have five minutes. Mr. Grimm, you want to let her go first? Okay. Yes, and please, name and address, please.
Linda Eggleston Noakowski, 317 South Main Street. I saw the notice for this meeting this morning, and I wondered what the purpose of the meeting was. And nobody seemed to know. And I went to the ordinances, and this meeting has not been called properly. It should not be held. The ordinance reads, clerk of council shall not later than 24 hours before the time of a special meeting of the municipal body post a statement of the time, place, and purpose of such special meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. Anything on that? Is that correct?
I...
Is that correct, that the notice for the appointment would be the all-avoided? Or did that somebody contact on that?
I'm not responsible to answer that. I have no idea. What does the charter say?
I'd have to look it up.
Let me get on my phone real quick. Did you print that out?
Yes.
Can I see that?
Yes.
It's from our charter?
Yes.
If that's the case, then we'll have to call another one.
Yeah, no, it's a meeting of my people who might have been here or not here because they didn't know what was about.
What's the section of that, Randy?
It was actually...
2.805.
That's... Can I see that piece of paper again?
Is that revised code, or...
Yeah, that's not our charter. That's under the regular codes.
We might submit another notice. We'll do it Friday.
I'm just the city manager. You want my opinion?
Yeah.
I think we need to reschedule the meeting.
All right, then we'll reschedule it for Friday. If that's the case.
Does anyone have a copy of the ad Emily took out?
Oh, I'm sure that it's on Facebook.
You gotta have a 24-hour notice. You can't do it Friday. There's...
As you know, I have no jurisdiction over council at all. My opinion, if you wanted, is to reschedule the meeting.
Yeah, I think that's the best.
Have a new ad that says you're going to appoint.
On Friday. And we'll do it Friday at 7:00 then. Ms. Berner?
Yes.
The last day would be Saturday that we can make the appointment.
You have 30 days to appoint?
Yep. 30 days for the interview for the council to make the motion, and then seven days after. So the... So it's Sunday to Sunday is all we have.
Who had the copy of the charter?
I can pull it up.
I think Mr. Cobb did.
Yeah, I can hold on.
Yeah, we'll just do it Friday. These are our... Let's see. Meetings are our... Now, those were... Those are how our ads have always ran, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So they've always ran that way. Yeah, since, I guess, the start...
For special meetings.
Yeah, for all the special meetings we've ever had, whether it be any appointment or any legislation or anything. Yeah. It's not on you, Ms. Berner. Don't worry. Or how far it goes back, you know?
Yeah, it goes back a ways.
It could go back. Claire was here for a while. It could've been Claire, or whoever was for Claire. Yeah, 'cause in our charter, it doesn't... It just says that it's a special meeting. It doesn't say notification, but if revised code states otherwise, then... Do you want to maybe call it on that? No? Okay.
Each council member shall elect to shall hold the office until the end of the residual term. Should the council fail to fill the vacancy within 30 days of the publication a notice of the vacancy...
The 25th of July was the publication.
Okay. Then you can appoint within seven days.
Yep.
So 30 days from when it was posted would be August 25th.
Yeah.
So 20... It came out on the 25th.
Yep.
When did the ad show up?
That's an ad.
Was it 25th or Wednesday?
Yeah, it was on that Wednesday paper on the 25th.
So we go to the 24th.
24th, yeah. Sunday, yeah.
Sure. Yeah. So what's the 31st?
Let's see. What would... We just do it Friday, which is the 31st, so there's seven days after that. So let's do 1, 2, 3... Yeah, so it's still within our seven days.
The Friday is?
Yeah.
But going into Monday's not?
Nope. Sunday would be... Saturday would be the last day for the appointment.
Correct.
And then we... If we failed to do that, we'd go to a special election in May or February and pay $12,000. So we'll just have to rewrite it then. Ms. Berner, do you mind if you submit that to the paper tomorrow for publication? Or today, I guess. Could it be submitted today to be in the paper tomorrow for the Springfield News?
Legal ads are different.
Yeah.
Go ahead. What is tomorrow?
Yeah, you only have 24 hours. From 7:00 to 7:00 would be... They publish at 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, because the paper goes out at 6:00.
She's not going to have time to put in the legal item, because tomorrow is Thursday.
All right. So we submit it to Friday, and then we just make the meeting on Saturday, the last day for the appointment.
Can you go to Saturday?
Yeah, we can do Saturday meetings.
Well, then that's what you have to do. Because if you don't, then it's going to go to special election. We've had discussion on the special election. You don't mind if I share that?
No, go ahead.
We've got a lot of big-ticket items coming up as far as our operating budget, as far as our CIP. We're going to need that seventh member, because we can't have our CIP or our budget ending in a 3-to-3 tie, because that kills the legislative piece. We don't have an operating budget. We can't operate 2019.
If we didn't have a voting block, we wouldn't have time.
I'm sorry.
If we didn't have a voting block on council, we wouldn't have time.
I have nothing to... I have nothing to do with that.
I know, but, you know, it's called voting. Your conscience is... You shouldn't have a voting block.
I... Everyone is... I...
Yeah.
Sure. So, yeah, we'll just publish the ad Friday.
The administration has nothing to do with what's going on.
Yep, and we'll just have a special meeting. And do you want to send it to Lynette first before you publish it, so it's done correctly, so it don't end in...
Oh, yeah. She just needs to add... Found the ad to appoint.
Yeah.
Like caps.
Yeah. Just in case anything else gets brought to our attention. So it looks like we're here. Mr. Lowry?
What's the... Is that... Well, yeah. That doesn't matter. I talked to the shop for $12,000 to do a special election.
Yep. I talked to Jason Baker from the Board of Elections and the special election. We've already missed the August 6th deadline to do an open. So we would go into May, which would cost us 12. And then if we tried to schedule it earlier, as in February, it would be close to 13.
Hey, Ryan.
For a special, I think. So...
So I guess we...
Well, then, is any other comments from members of the public?
What time on Saturday?
I can send that to council. 7:00 PM on Saturday? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah. I can get bigger. That's okay. We're not voting.
Yeah. What is due? Do you want to do Saturday morning instead of in the evening? Because people have plans in the evening.
What time?
10:00 AM, 10:30?
On Saturday?
No. Say what?
Saturday?
Two Saturdays in a row at 9:00 AM might be a little early for Randy.
I was going to ask him to come to a Saturday meeting.
That's all right. You don't have to be here. Yeah, we'll just do... Want to do it noon?
Yeah, noon would be better. I can reawaken.
Charlotte House is probably not open.
We'll just do it at the firehouse station.
Yeah. Can you make a note of that in the fire station?
Mm-hmm. Saturday is still within the...
The seven days. Yep. Let's double-check that. Double-check it. So if there's 31... So 25th is when the publication came out. So it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and then...
What time the publication... You have it written in your paper, sir. What time does your paper get released? Like noon, 1 o'clock? Like, what time is it officially out on Wednesday? Because I mean, it may come down to a matter of hours. If your paper don't hit the shelves till noon, and the ad is an hour early, then that's 24. We need to make sure they have the meeting within the timeframe.
Something you can get early in the morning, something you can get in the afternoon.
So we'll just say midnight at...
Yeah. So let's count it out then here, just to be sure we're safe without...
Thank you, Dale.
Having this run aground. So 25th, so 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31st. So that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 days. And then to the 25th. Yeah, so we're still... Saturday's our last day for the appointment.
That's if it didn't count until October 4th?
No, for the 25th, when the ad was published. It still falls within that timeframe. Yes. Does anyone else want to count it out with me?
10 o'clock.
I'm going to count it out. So 25th, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23... I just messed up here. Did I click on that?
7 days from the 25th?
Uh, between the 24th. So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. So Friday is the last day, it looks maybe.
Friday is the last day.
But the question then would be, if it's the last day, I guess we have to look up what... How you would notify.
Our charter says in the paper, general circulation.
General circulation, yeah. So maybe we just...
Can I see your charter again? I know it says it. I know I do public... I do... I mean, I do legal ads for planning board all the time.
Yeah.
And it has to be in a circulation.
General circulation, yeah, according to our meetings.
So if you don't have time, then...
We need to double-check with Lynette, just to make sure that the seven days are...
You're going to have to go to special election if you don't have the time.
Yep. Okay. That would be incredibly unfortunate for the city to spend that money.
How much is a special election?
12 grand.
Okay.
It won't be until next year sometime.
So we need to have a 2019 budget, not our 18th current budget.
Oh.
Because if we have to spend... We'll talk.
Yeah. So we'll see. Though, if there's 31 days, 1, 2, 3... 25th to the 24th would be... That would be 30. Then 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Yeah, 7 days would be Friday night at midnight, or 1:59 would be the last minute. So...
Isn't that only fixed? We just call that and have to re-gain to the wrong rate, and it's according to the charter and according to what that says and what we've all seen?
I think the charter's pretty self-explanatory, Mrs. Reynolds. I really do. Yeah. Can I see your...
I think what we should do is if we can reach out to the paper tonight, have it submitted.
Because, I mean, you can sit there and publish things other ways, but our charter is binding.
I can't read it.
Yes, ma'am. You're coming up at Saturday?
Yeah.
You have 30 days. You have 30. It'd be a... Midnight of the... The 25th would be your... Well, actually, I guess with Dale, what's the earliest someone can pick up a paper from you on Wednesday, when the date is issued on the general circulation? Because I know they can pick up on Tuesday from you, but the date on the paper was for the 25th.
The paper's dated 25th.
Yes. So what's the earliest someone can pick up?
There is no time.
There is. I'd have to use that 12, 12 o'clock.
Yeah, we'll just do 12 o'clock on the 35th, so...
I'm just counting right here. If it was published on July 25th, then 26th would be the first day of the 30th. And if you go 1, 2, 3, 4 weeks, would be the third, about 28 days. 29, 30 would be the 25th. And 7 days back of that, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 would be the first September.
Let's... I think this is honestly, Randy, something that Lynette needs to look at.
It's 7 days from the 25th. Okay. If they came out on July 25th, that was a Wednesday. So from July 25th to Thursday, 26th is one day. So 25 to 26th is one, 27 is two, 28 is three, 29 is four, 30 is five, 31 is two, first... Or where's that at? Where's that at, 31? 6. And then September 1st would be 7 days.
Do you have a change on the tax form?
So then we'd be fine then. So we have to do the first.
No, you have 30... No, I did that wrong. You have 30 days from... So that puts it into August 25th.
24.
Because there's 31 days. All right, so we'll count from the 24th. So the 24th to the 25th is one day. Follow me along here. 26th is the second day. 27th is the third day. 28th is the fourth day. 29th, which is today, is the fifth day. 30th is the sixth day. Friday is the seventh day.
How... I don't understand how you're doing it.
Because I go from 24 to 25.
How did you get 24? Because I came out on 25.
Did you... On... From July 25th to August 25th, it's actually August 24th, because there's 31 days in July.
Okay. Okay. So it's August 25th.
So you have 30 days.
So it starts counting 30 days from 26th. 26th would be the first whole day.
No, 25th would be the first whole day, because it comes out first thing in the morning. You have to count July 25th, because the paper came out that day. Does that make sense?
Yeah. All right, then. I think that this meeting obviously isn't a little bit of error.
I'll get ahold of Lynette first thing, then run it through.
Well, I think that if we can contact the paper tonight, if Emily... Ms. Berner, if you want to contact the Springfield News, see if you can submit it, because our papers haven't been printed yet.
They close at like 4 o'clock, if that department does.
That department does.
Well, she can try, but from experience.
Just give it a shot.
Give it a shot.
Yep. And if we can, we do that. We'll go from there.
You are applying on what?
It depends. I guess it'll be on the paper. Saturday at noon, if that's possible.
Okay.
Or Friday night.
She's not...
Yeah, you want to... Any other comments from members of the public at this time?
No.
Anyone know any good jokes?
Can you hear me? Do you have your copy of your charter with you at your house?
I just...
The problem that we're having is the... It's a matter of timing with dates, and we're thinking that we're going to have to force this appointment into a special election. I think I know the answer, but they want to be just to verify it through you. And you can grab...
Do you have appointments on your calendar?
Yeah, due to timing on legal ads and stuff. Well, we're trying to do that right now. But we had a citizen voice some concern over the legal ad that didn't state the purpose as to why we're meeting, which is a very valid statement.
On what?
Yes, it just gave a time and date, but did not state a purpose. So... Yes, so appoint tonight. That's what's going on now. But, again, one of the citizens had voiced concern that that legal ad did not state the purpose of tonight's meeting. And she's correct in that statement. Sure. So we have to redo the legal ad. So... Sure. And that's what I got in front of me. Yep.
Yeah, Tucker's going through there right now. I'm going to go to section 4.08. Yep. And we're going to go to D. Okay. So get a pen and paper and jot this timeframe down. July 25th is when the legal ad appeared that there was a vacancy. Okay. That ran for the 30 days. But July had 31 days in it. Okay, so right now, what we're trying to figure out is that second part, that the 30-day publication has passed. Now the mayor can appoint within seven days. I'm saying the seven days is... Is going to be on Saturday.
Audio.
And we just need to make sure it's Friday or Saturday, because the problem is, we don't have time to put another legal ad in. And if we don't have time to put another legal ad in, because they only publish those sort of times, you only have... You only have to like 5 o'clock to call them to get stuff in. So if it's Saturday, we can get a legal ad in. If it's Friday, we won't have time to get a legal ad in. So we need to know when that seven days is from July 25th. I'm counting July 25th, because that's the day the paper came in. The paper came out on the 25th, so you have to count that as one of the seven days. That's...
After all petition, you have...
So the question is, is what is that seventh day?
If you create your own special petition form, if the state's guidelines, all it's going to be all... Yeah, they do petition. Because we don't have a petition form board. The Board of Elections can't create it. So if you forget one line, booed it. You've got to spend like 20 grand to have a special election. Because we'll have to elect the language, so we could pay the... Let's just... Pay for the election itself. And apparently now, as Randy's saying, we might have Saturday for this. Well, it is what it is. We'll cross that bridge when we get there.
That's what I got. August 30th is your last day, which is tomorrow.
August 30th. Tomorrow? Is your last day at 1:00?
Oh, gee, I got it.
The 30th? Be the last day though, 1:00?
Yeah, because if August 24th was the 30 days, you have 7 days from the 20th.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah. All right. So must we go to special election then?
All right, there.
Maybe.
That's what I got. I got the 30th. I was going to... Yeah, the 30th or default down to the 31st. Either way, it's looking like... Because the 24th is the day was the 30 days up. So you have 30... You have 7 days from the 24th, when that ad expired, essentially. So doing that is 24, 25, 26, 27, 29, 30th would be your seventh day, which is tomorrow. Yeah, so therein lies, the notice was defective, because it did state the purpose, which it needs to. And then we don't have time to note to put 24-hour notice and back into a newspaper. So it has to default. Okay?
I'm wondering how many ordinances are the longer that are... So now I wonder how many ordinances are the longer that are...
For our charter. Okay, so that one we'll have to go to.
I would ask that question before. It's...
The rules don't state anything in there. And then, so you would have to default to the charter. That is not under the charter. That's under, I think, section 2 of your of the code. If you have one second. Under general... You want to go 208.05? Notice of special meetings. I don't think the charter addresses meetings.
Yeah, it doesn't. Not that I see.
I go from 4 to 5 on the charter. I don't have a section 3 on the charter, the one off the back. I don't have the full charter in my house.
What section is she in?
Yeah. If you pull up 3, then... Because if you look at... Actually, if you look at 208.06, notice of special meetings, which is under E, an emergency event, you don't need to have notification or... An event of... An event requiring immediate official action, a special meeting may be held without giving 24 hours notice.
Notification.
Without...
Notification.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
But this isn't an actual council. But this is an actual council.
She's looking for that. Okay, it's on that section.
Yeah, looking at the code, because charter doesn't state. City codes. And the new call papers already ran.
What are you looking at?
The candidate. Boy, one, two, A.
Gets printed Monday night.
Yep.
Okay, Lynette, look at 208.04.
That's my source for that number.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but- State law, uh, state law, whatever, right now.
Because that's not their charter. That's our regular exemption. Over home cities, it doesn't matter.
You have to do it by state code, since it's not addressed on our charter.
It's addressed in our city.
What if it's addressed in our regular codes, not the charter? Under powers of the- Yeah, I got that, okay. Can you go to 208.04 first? And look at A, and look at, um- 208.04B. Says that clerk shall post a statement of the time and place of any organizational meeting in the municipal office 24 hours before the time. That does not say that she has to give the purpose. But state code, chun-chin laws, home rule. Let's see how it goes. Does it say regular meetings?
It just says any, it just says meetings. It says, the council will state the time and place of any organizational meeting. And we're home rule, which we argued this before. Well, we have legal counsel looking at it. I'm not an attorney. You're not an attorney, we'll let her handle.
Okay. Just in the ears of you. It's all daily, regular meetings.
It says any meeting.
Okay. I got 208. So what is your, what, give me your Reader's Digest opinion on how this council should proceed.
We could, we could try it. Well, that's- I'm good, thank you. Sorry, I have bronchitis. Yeah. It's vague.
You wanna call him, yeah?
Might as well be here, it's 7:30.
Is him appointing someone taking action, or is that taking action mean they're actually voting on something that required the board to vote? So how is action defined?
I think I'm not in the chart. Because I think I'm not in the chart.
Okay. I, I, I think-
Yeah, go ahead. I just fucked up.
So you were researching if they can take action out of emergency? Okay, so can, can- Okay. Sure. Well, yeah, you got a point, because they've, they've had different avenues to go ahead and appoint, so this is considered an emergency, since they've had other avenues. Emergencies are like, hey, something just popped up, we need to take action right now. So, I understand. All right, I will communicate this. Thank you so much for taking the phone call in the evening, I appreciate that. If you can get back to me, um, as soon as your schedule allows on that opinion, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Bye-bye. Okay. Uh, what she's saying is no action to be taken tonight, and what she needs to do is she needs to find out if you are allowed to do this in an emergency, and if this is actually considered an emergency in the state of Ohio. What I've said to her, and she agreed, is you've had ample opportunities, you've got time to do this, so this constitutes as an emergency. Emergency on the administration side of things is, hey, we just had a car ram into the city building, we need to take action right now. Those are emergency. Since this had other avenues, um, she's gonna look and look to constitute that.
All right.
Um, what I'm getting from her is if she's going to have the opinion, and state law says this is not an emergency, it will default, go to a special election.
Yep.
Right? Did you get ahold of the news? Sorry? That's, that's my point. Just what I said, she's looking to see if this would be considered an emergency.
All right. Counsel, considering that this meeting is no longer needed. Mr. Allred.
Second.
Your turn.